It's 6:01 and I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 15, 2023 to order. Can we begin with roll call?
Present. Mike Barone.
Manolo Rangel.
Present.
Johnny Narvise.
Present.
Yuxin Wang. Regina Portillo.
Present.
Daniela Sadapal.
Present.
Hector Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you do have quorum. Just a note, Ms. Ana Villarreal submitted her resignation. And we do have the council person already knows. And an appointment will be announced at City Council, and then we hope to have them by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. You can also have a motion to excuse those commissioners who are not present today.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Can we now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now moving on to the consider the probable minutes of meeting June 1, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion. Second. Have a second by Commissioner Gassadis. All in favor? Against, motion carries. Citizen comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe there is one citizen comment, and we've put the card in front of you.
Is it in reference to a particular item or is it a general comment?
Particular item.
Particular item?
Yeah. So basically, when that item comes up?
That person can be called. We're gonna open the public hearing and move on to item 6A.
Can I?
Oh.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to move up 6...
L?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item 6L. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Opening the public hearing for item 6L, which is amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 113,159.62 square feet, 2,5978 acres being all of block number 1,713, part of block number 1,782, and the right-of-way of New York between these two blocks as recorded in volume 7, page 15, of Webb County Platt Record in the Eastern Division, City of Laredo, Webb County, Texas. More particularly, the described meets and bounds in attached exhibits A and D to that certain warranty date dated November 8, 2016, from the city of Laredo to Laredo-Webb Neighborhood Housing Services Incorporated, recorded November 15, 2016, as document number 1281296, volume 4, 143, page 565 of the office of the county clerk of Webb County, Texas, located at approximately 300 Arkansas Avenue from R2 multifamily residential district to R1B single-family high-density district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is NHS Laredo Holding Corp. Owner Elizabeth Alonso Villarreal is the applicant representative. The property location is approximately 113,159.62 square feet, 2.5978 acres, located at approximately 300 Arkansas Avenue. The zone change request is from an R2 to an R1B. Proposed use is residential. Letter sent 2940 against 0. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recognition, staff support to propose zone change? Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Alonso Villarreal, CEO for Laredo Web NHS, and our organization is in support of this item to construct affordable housing.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Or for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There are motion to close public hearing and approve or recommend. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6A. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for restaurants serving alcohol on the east half of Lot 2 and Lot 3, Block 1, 2, 3, City of Laredo Western Division conveyed to the Laredo Independent School District, ET AL, recorded in volume 105, page 684, official public records of Webb County, Texas, located at 1714 Houston Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant design ideals L. Alcine is owner. Roberto V. Gonzalez is the applicant representative. The property location is east half of Lot 2 and Lot 3, Block 1, 2, 3, City of Laredo Western Division conveyed to the Laredo Independent School District, ET AL, recorded at, recorded in volume 105, page 684, official public record of the Webb County, Texas, located at 1714 Houston Street. The zone change request is a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol, and the proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent or 1641 against 0. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recognition, staff support to propose special use permit? Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Nice.
Hello.
Hi. Your name for the record?
Roberto Gonzalez.
Any here in favor of this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant?
You okay with all the?
All the conditions.
All the conditions?
Sure.
You're, it's, it's for rent, right? Like, la mansión is for rent?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to be able to serve alcohol when you rent the place? Or do you want to open?
I'm proposing a restaurant, yes.
A restaurant?
Yes, a restaurant.
For a daily basis?
Um, yes. We're gonna start off slow, but eventually, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Going to back to my question. Do you agree with?
All the comments.
I would like to be open later, but, I mean, I can, I recognize where I'm at, so yes, I agree with it.
And what's the problem? We did 9 o'clock.
That was on the, I believe that was on the letter that was submitted to go, to go, to use these times.
That was the time they wanted or the time that we didn't pose on them?
No, no, no. It was just something that, how can I say this? I knew would be agreeable, and maybe in the future, we can come back later and propose something a little, that goes a little later, but I think this was something that started off.
9 o'clock, you, that's up to you, but this is, this is, that was your recommendation, not the, not the.
No, I, I.
At 9 o'clock to me, there's, nobody goes in either 9 o'clock. They wait till 9, 9:30, 10, 10:30. So, it's just my opinion.
No, no, I understand that. Yeah, yeah, no, you're right.
No, Taki said he's trying to.
No, I understand that.
Neighborhood and all that, yeah.
I'm working with the neighborhood and I gauge the temperature of the area, and I think, I mean, to start off, I'm not, I would love to be open later. I think it's a, it's a great thing. I think it'd be a great thing for the neighborhood. It'll come. It'll come. I'll be here again in a couple of months, probably maybe in a year or two, once I get my feet off the ground. I don't plan to go full force, but once I get my feet off the ground, you'll see me again.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure. Yes.
I guess maybe this is more for staff, but where, what are the noise restrictions in this zone?
We have, we put outdoor music shall be kept at a minimum. You know, it talks about ground vibrations, different noise levels. One of the things about this particular location, if you were to stand in front of this building and you look to the, to the east, that was an old LISD building that's now unoccupied. Across the street, there's three LISD buildings, and all those are unoccupied.
All vacant.
Next door to him on the other side is, well, it's the KC, I believe it's a restaurant that's next door to him on the other side. So, that right there, it's just.
Directly behind me, also LISD building, vacant.
Vacant.
All vacant.
So.
Downtown, vacant.
I'm keeping that neighborhood alive, right there, so. And to your point about the noise, you know, I live there, and there's a lot bigger fish to fry when it comes to noise complaints. And if someone would can regulate the Kansas City Southern Railroad that blows all night long, at a level that literally deafens people. You know, I mean, until we regulate them, please, you know what I mean? Like, they're going all night, and they're deaf, they're, they're, they literally deafen their drivers, so. I mean, they're so loud that it's not, that's not, that shouldn't be allowed in the neighborhood, but it is, so, I mean, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close and introduce?
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 2, Block 1, Monaco subdivision, located at 1018 Monaco Boulevard from B3 Community Business District to B4 Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Angelina Wu, owner. And the applicant, Carla Elizondo, is the representative. The property description is Lot 2, Block 1, Monaco subdivision, located at 1018 Monaco Boulevard. Zone change request is from a B3 to a B4. Proposed use, commercial. The applicant did not identify the specific proposal for commercial uses. Letter sent 1440 against 0. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recognition, staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Hi, good afternoon. Carlos Elizondo. More than anything, we want to see if you would approve to change from B3 to B4 to promote more business. My clients want, more than anything, to leave the options open. It is a new commercial plaza and be able to have more options to bring in businesses. I do reside within 100 feet of the Placita, and everything's booming in that area. And limiting it to a B3 permit wouldn't allow new businesses to come into that neighborhood. And more than anything, it's out. We have a B4 within a mile north and a B4 within a mile south, and we kind of stayed in the middle.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Or for staff?
Do, do you know what the proposed, what's it called?
Use.
Use would be?
Right now?
Or what, what, why do you want to upgrade to a B4 if a lot of businesses are in B3? And what we normally, with a B4, it's because of the maquinitas or a bar or something like that. That's why I'm asking.
More than anything, the client doesn't want to limit themselves right now to actually say, you know, this is gonna only be for that particular type of businesses, businesses. The first business that is already there is Mental Limón, and that area does have Buffalo Wild Wings across, Average Joes nearby, so I really feel that they don't want to limit themselves to not being able to put any other type of business like that around there.
Is, is, there's a school there, no?
The school is Herrera, and it's, I believe, like, maybe seven blocks down, you know?
Isn't, isn't it?
United Days, probably closer than, yeah. United Days a lot closer than.
United Day is south, more closer towards HEB Plus.
It's north.
But you said you, Average Joes, right?
Yeah, Average Joes is within 100 feet of it, and then Buffalo Wild Wings is right across.
There's a, como se dice, como un kinder.
Um, it's.
American daycare.
Daycare.
Learning and the All-American.
All-American and.
Yes.
Something with an apple.
It's, I believe it's. It is like a little daycare, it's a learning center.
It's a learning center.
Yes. And then the butterfly is also down.
Down, down, down the street.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the map, where the area is, it's surrounded by B3. Usually, B4 is reserved for commercial district-type, highway district-type areas. It is situated behind, near residential. When you go to B4, you do open yourselves up for more noise, like bars, outdoor patios, that disturbs the neighborhood and, you know, the surrounding neighbors. Staffs, what was your take on this?
So, Mr. Chairman, in a B3, if the person wanted to have a restaurant serving alcohol, they would come in and they can get a conditional use permit, a special use permit for, for that. So, it doesn't limit them to that. They could if they, if they wanted to come and do that. So, our position, as far as all the B3 that's here, she's correct, there is two B4s. One is Doctors Hospital, the other one is HEB on Delmar Boulevard in McPherson, but in between that, it's all B3 in the area. But once again, if they wanted to get a license or put a restaurant there serving alcohol, they still can, they're B3. So, it is available to them, so it doesn't limit them. I, I believe it doesn't limit them. And of course, coming in to say what the use is also really helps. In this case, it leaves it open, and, you know, once you make the zone change, that's it. There's no going back, and without knowing what it's gonna be, it really, or if they sell it, maybe their intention is, is good, but then they sell the property, then somebody else comes in, and that's where we have problems.
Thank you. Are there, yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
It's still public, so they open it for, against. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If not, I believe there was gonna be a motion.
First class. That's first-class learning center. I don't know about it.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to deny this item.
We have a motion?
A second, yes.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6C. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by amending ordinance 2013-0-139, which authorize a conditional use permit for amusement redemption machine establishment on Lot 5, Block 1, Traumont MNI subdivision unit 1, located 8601 McPherson Road, in order to add Angelina Wu, DBA May Wa Incorporated as a party to whom the permit is issued to.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Angelina Wu, owner, applicant Carla Elizondo, is representative. Property description, location is Lot 5, Block 1, Traumont MNI subdivision unit 1, located at 8601 McPherson Road. The zone change request is a conditional use permit amendment for amusement redemption machine establishment. The proposed use, amusement redemption machine establishment. Letter sent or 2140 against 0. Background, ordinance 2013-0139, conditional use permit on October 21st of 2013. The, the city council approved of the conditional use permit for an amusement redemption machine establishment. The requested CUP amendment for this ordinance, 2013-0139, are as follows. CUP issuance, the addition of Angelina Wu, DBA May Wa Incorporated. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recognition, staff supports the proposed, uh, the proposed conditional use permit amendment. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Yes.
So, on this situation, the, the, the old owner, who was Carlos Villarreal, no relation to the Carlos, the you said. He was the owner, and he was, he was selling this property to Ms. Wu. He was making the payments.
But this is not.
In the past, this item came here, and her name was removed from the conditional use permit. Now that she's the owner, there was a problem because her name was on here. So, what you have in front of you is just removing Carlos Villarreal.
And adding her.
And just adding Angelina Wu, who is the.
That's what, that's what they requested. That was correct.
Did she, Chris?
It's just an add-on, to add her.
Yes.
Oh, to add her, but leave Carlos Villarreal.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what you have in front of you, just adding her name.
Okay. And you're in favor of this item, of course.
Me again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Close the lid, this is recommended for staff.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6D. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 0.44 acre tract of land out of share 8 of the Yanuichi Rodriguez partition out of 16.1068 acre tract of land described in deed, recorded in volume 846, pages 782 to 784, deed records, Webb County, Texas, situated in Porción 23, Leonardo Sanchez, abstract 283, Webb County, Texas, located south of Shiloh Drive and west of Snow Falls Drive from R1 Single Family Residential District to B1 Limited District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant Victor Ulo Larsa, older applicant. Ricardo Ramos is the representative. Property description, approximately 0.44 acre tract of land located south of Shiloh Drive and west of Snow Falls Drive. Zone change request is from an R1 to a B1. Proposed use is a child development center, daycare center. Letter sent or 2640 against 1. Location view? Aerial map? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recognition, staff support to propose zone change? Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Hello.
Hi. Your name for the record?
Mr. Withiérrez.
First name?
I wrote the, the charter. You don't have to give your first name. Sorry. Legal can tell you that. All right. Sorry, I work in the city charter. And I do it for reasons. All right. I'm here against.
Okay.
And I guess they confirmed that they received my letter. I don't know if they can put it up on the screen or not. If not, I'll read it up. Uh, dear committee members, I am writing to strongly urge you to reconsider allowing the zoning change that would permit a daycare facility to be located on a busy intersection in question. The potential traffic issues associated with such a decision cannot be overlooked as they pose significant concerns for the safety and well-being of both children attending the daycare and the local community. The busy intersection is inherently prone to congestion and increased traffic flow. Introducing a daycare facility is already a challenging environment, would only exacerbate the situation. The safety of the children should be our utmost priority. And subjecting them to potential traffic hazards is a risk that cannot be taken lightly. Additionally, the increased volume of vehicles in the area would not only affect the daycare facility itself, but also impact the surrounding neighborhood. Residents may face difficulties assessing their home, accessing their homes, experience heightened noise levels, and witness a decline in overall quality of life. We must consider the negative implications of such a zoning change could have on the community as a whole. It is crucial to explore alternative locations for a daycare facility that are better suited to accommodate the needs of the children and minimize the potential traffic disruptions. This would not only ensure their safety, but also contribute to the harmony and functionality of the neighborhood. In conclusion, I implore you to prioritize the well-being of the community and the safety of the children by refraining from allowing a zoning change that would place a daycare facility on a busy intersection. Let us seek alternative solutions that address the daycare's needs while maintaining the integrity and safety of the surrounding areas. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. In addition, if you pull up, you have the map of the, the, the one outside, that one. That one, perfect. No, the other one. One more.
This one?
Yeah. See all those on this, if you're looking down at south, all those homes right there? The entrance and exit. There's no other than that. And, and new homes are being built in addition to that. That's gonna create, look at that turn. That, what you see there, if you're familiar with Bartlett and Jacobin, the, the, the rock? Remember all that little traffic stuff they had? That's what you're gonna do there. Same thing. It's gonna develop the same thing. Has the area experienced the same thing already? If you look at Havana and the Loop, count how many deaths? How far is that from there? Those were done and approved here, so I'm asking you to consider that. And you're gonna have, remember, the daycare is gonna be active at what time? 8 o'clock? 5 o'clock? What's coming in, what's coming out? If you're coming in, I guess, eastbound on, on Shiloh, wanting to turn into the neighborhood, and there's cars coming in and out of that daycare, you're potential accident, and hopefully not taking kids with you. So, I would just leave that thought with you guys, and hopefully you make a correct decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this is a public hearing. We did have somebody speak against. Let me just open up for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item. If so, come forward. Okay. Are there any questions for staff?
Rafa, can you put the, the map? The Google? The Google map?
There's a Burger King right down the street.
I just wanna know, I know where it is, but, and I know that the subdivisions, if they have like another exit, another exit or something, that's what I wanna verify.
So, the applicant's not here?
The applicant?
No, I don't think. Was, was this lot originally, because I see it's an R1, so was it originally designated to, to be built, like, for a home originally?
Yes, R1.
One?
I. The Loop, Estapa?
Yeah, there's, that's.
Right there. And then the street.
East Plantation.
Yeah, that's East Plantation, that's the Burger King right there.
That's the Burger King.
There's an Aqua Place right there.
And the other part, where, where is it gonna be built?
To the left of that.
A little bit after that.
And the Demonic, Demonic Ministry Church is.
But it does, it, it's the only way in and way out. That's what I wanted to confirm.
Let me just, let's just finish this question, and you can come back up, yes?
I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay.
Because it might be, because it's in the corner, it might be a, a little bit risky. Do we have, do we have someone with?
I mean, I.
Road.
What staff? Mr. Ramos, Mr. Ramos isn't here, who's the engineer or worker?
The engineer?
Traffic.
Traffic, the traffic flow within the property? Pick up and pick the.
Has traffic, excuse me?
Within the property. You have a drop-off area, you have.
Did they give a site plan or anything, or propose it?
No, we did not give a site plan.
Okay.
Because I proposed to table, it's, I don't know.
Because it makes sense, it makes sense in a corner, as you're coming out, leave your kids, go to work, come back and pick them up. There's a lot of areas have them like that, and they had to be, that, there's not a big.
It's a major arterial.
Not a big traffic jam, but depends how they, they set it up for delivery and, and pickup.
And there, there is, you know, it is a, a major arterial, as we were discussing. Also, our comprehensive planning.
Also, our comprehensive plan looks for businesses like this that are compatible with the rooftops in order to be near homes. They can walk to go get the kids. So this is kind of what's happened. You see the Burger King that's down the street. You see the B1 right across the street. Same idea, same concept, to put stuff within walking distance, which is part of what our comprehensive plan.
Is there a minimum or maximum of kids that can take?
That's a state-level decision, but there is.
There is?
Yes, they have to follow state guidelines and...
Well, I understand that, but because of the corner, the side of the property or the side of the daycare, you don't put 80 kids into a daycare that only can hold 20. That's what I'm talking about.
And if the engineers aren't here and a person that can speak up for it, how can we decide?
There's no traffic light there, right?
No, there's no traffic light.
There is.
Saved by the bell?
Yes, I apologize for being late. My name is Ricardo Ramos and I'm the engineer of record for this zone change. See if you have any questions.
Our concern, one of the concerns from the commission was the traffic flow being there's only one exit going off from Snow Falls to Shiloh. And as far as proposed size being that it's an R1 zoning going to be one, so is there some sort of site plan or design do you have that has other entrance and exits going out?
Not yet, but the client is working on it. He just wanted to make sure that he has his own before he hires the architect and he's got a little sketch and stuff like that, but he doesn't have official plans. Now, when we did the plot, that was one of the requirements that we couldn't get access from Shiloh. So the plot shows that the access is going to be through Snow Falls.
There's no falls.
Yes.
Are there any questions from the commission or?
No. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
This is a public hearing. Do you have anything extra to add? Yes, come forward. No, it's alright, it's okay.
Alright, what you see here is, this is it right here, the area, right? This is the subdivision here in question. These are the new homes that are going to be built. There's already homes here. Additional, as you can tell, there is no other exit for here. Now, if you want to look at the, I'll see if this thing can do it. If you want to look at the street view, see the traffic? Let's take a look at the traffic. Come over here. This is, you've got this hidden turn here, as you can tell. Know what I mean?
And there's an incline too there.
Yeah, there's an incline, so you're coming in, you're not going to be able to see what's here. And it's not like you have a lot of traffic, because I mean, that doesn't look like a lot of traffic. Does it? Now, we can always use the pedestrian to walk as well, as the director said. It'd be ideal for children to cross this street, wouldn't it? On a downhill to get home. I mean, everything that's been mentioned is just, no, no, no. I mean, you're seeing the proof. This is Google, this is not my photo, this is Google's photo. So you have one entrance that is on a downhill. I mean, I'm all for business. You know, if they want to do it, that's fine, but engineering needs to put a light there in order to control the traffic and avoid fatalities. That's my only concern. I'm sorry, I didn't know I could use the map, so I just wanted to show this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess this would be for staff. Is it possible, like theoretically, to create another entrance and exit into and from this neighborhood? Like say in Wyndham Terrace Trail, if you continue all the way to Shiloh? It looks like it's possible to create another entrance and exit to Shiloh.
That would, I'd have to defer to traffic on that one if they're even considering putting another exit there. I'm not sure.
And what would it take to look at a study like that? Or like initiate a study like that? Like not only the, a new entrance and exit, but also the putting in a traffic light as a constituent?
That would be council's decision. You know, they would have to direct.
A traffic study?
Yes. But we will communicate your comments to the traffic director, you know, just to let him know.
Mr. Navarro, but just for, to state in the record, obviously, we are just like looking through this right now, but if they change the, we're here for the zoning, right?
Right.
Okay. Because everything has to go through every specific department, right?
Correct, so...
So all of these little issues that have, are big issues that have come up, would have to be checked by all these departments, right?
That's correct, but as the engineer said, the owner is first wanting to make sure he can get the zone and then he'll put the design together. For example, one of the things that as a daycare, they must have a drive that can hold three cars on their property. So that's required. So they would have to design that in their design. So those are the things that building will look at and so will the engineers and all the different, even traffic.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say one thing too, is when we were doing the plot of this property, we did the study for site distances. That was one of the requirements that traffic required us to do. And the plot actually has a note in there about setbacks for site distance. So we took care of that when we did the plot.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who speaks in favor or against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to close and introduce as recommended by staff.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to items 6E.
I'm sorry, really quick, who's the second motion, sorry?
The second one, for you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Item 6E. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Silo Rado by rezoning Lot 1, Paso del Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located north of Markley Lane and east of Marco Drive from M1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agricultural District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicants Guillermo Caldera, owner and Silo Rado applicant. Property location, Lot 1, Paso del Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located north of Markley Lane and east of Marco Drive. Background, the city council directed staff to initiate the zone change. Zone change request is M1 to AG. Proposed use is unspecified. Letter sent, 67. We have one, none for, none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is, staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I do have a witness card for comment from Jose Orondo. Would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon, for the record, my name is Joel Wando. Please excuse my glasses, I couldn't find any clear glasses and I can't see without them.
It's fine.
I'm here to speak on Echo, Foxtrot and Golf. They all belong to the same owner, except the Foxtrot. That belongs to Mr. Caldera, it was just recently changed over to him. But these other properties belong to Mr. Nick Barajas. He recently, or not recently, he just passed away and his family is settling his affairs and everything. He was a very good friend of mine. And the family is still in mourning. We don't know who requested it, I just know, we didn't know that they were going to make a change and the family asked me, hey, can you go speak on our behalf? They live in Dallas, they weren't able to come down here. And we noticed that there's no reason for it. We don't, ourselves don't understand the reason for it. My personal belief is that before Nick passed away, I had several conversations with him and he had several offers for the property from the city and private investors. And when I spoke to the family and told them I was aware that, you know, he had received several offers from the city and from private investors. My belief is that maybe they're just trying to change it to bring down the price of the property, which they haven't sold. They offered him several times, you know, they kept bringing up the price and bringing up the price. I know he wasn't going to sell. I've known him for several years and he had told me he's not going to sell. Now that he passed away, his family, I don't know if they're going to sell or not, I can't guess for anybody else, right? But I think that there's no purpose in changing this from a light manufacturing into agriculture. It's not like you're going to, you know, plant anything there, you're not going to be able to put corn or anything, it's so close to the river. So I would please ask you that. You vote no on this. At least while the family is going through their mourning, you know, just out of respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for? This is a public hearing. It's a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, I know there's some questions from the commission on this.
Yes. I know you, why doesn't staff support the zone change? I know, I know. I didn't get your last name.
Orlando.
Orlando?
Orlando.
Orlando.
I'm sorry, I probably had questions that just took off, I'm sorry.
The thing is, well, this one belongs to our district. And you mentioned something very assertive. That is, that he wasn't going to be able, or he wasn't intending to sell it because it's very close to the bridge, to the bridge, to the river, right? So in the Apuríso District, it is known as an unbuildable creek, okay? Because it's in the flat, in the floodway. In the floodway, floodway. So basically, I don't know why the city would, or has wanted to change it to AG, but that's the best use for it because you can't, right now it's an M1. And the only things that you can build in an M1 is a warehouse or a parking lot for warehouses, for boxes, right? Trailer, trailer boxes. And in 2010, when the crescent, when the crescent grows, when it's in the flood zone, the water comes up all the way to the houses. So in 2010, there were some trailer boxes that were there and the city got a lot of issues and problems with it because it's in the streamline and the streamline has three bridges, right? So imagine these boxes floating around with this flow, with water flow, with no control because we humans don't have that control. So I'm assuming, right, that that's why they are proposing the best use as an AG because it is an unbuildable creek, right?
Just a brief clarification, not to be argumentative or anything, it's just that Mr. Barajas started his, he was a very wealthy person and he started his fortune with 18-wheelers with trucks and, you know, transportation. And upriver from that location, he also has other properties and there's, just like you said, he has parking space for several trucks there. And yeah, when that issue came up at that time, yeah, we did have a problem with that. It was resolved. In this, in this specific case, I did speak to somebody from the Army Corporate Engineers. And like you said, yes, we can, not we, but they can build a, you know, a parking lot right there. It'd probably be very expensive and at this time it's probably not financially worth doing that. But the value is there to the city because the city has always wanted that. Sometime back, they asked them if they could build a basketball court there and it was going to use it, create a lot of hoopla. I know for a fact that Mr. Barajas didn't receive any money out of that. He just did it all kind of as hard, he said, yeah, sure, go ahead and, you know, I don't want to sell it, but you guys can use it. And he didn't know it was going to bounce back to him that way, he was pretty upset when that happened. But going back to what you said about the unbuildable, you can, for the purposes that they were using it at that time, it can be used for that. Unfortunately, he's passed away, I don't know what his family intends to do with it, but I do know that there are several other investors. And TSI is a neighboring company that also has shown some interest at some, at the past. They offered some money too for the location, but there's other private investors that wanted the place as well as the city. And like you said, they didn't even put a reason why, it's just there. It's kind of, to me, it's very suspicious that they would just want to make a change at this time, you know?
I have a question for either staff or legal because the city's initiating the change, your request for zone change, but the owner of the property is not. So can that be done or?
Yes, a city can, can propose legal. A city can initiate on their own a zone change without the owner.
So the city can?
But it's rarely done.
It is rare.
Rarely, rarely done. I don't think that's legal, but is it correct?
Yeah, in my opinion, it may be legal, but it looks awfully immoral because it's an undertaking of a property. To me, that's what it is, it's just...
I understand what she said about parking, about building a parking lot because in 2010, we actually had four trucks going down the river that we had, that we were actually had pictures of that. They had to dive into the river and chain these things, they were like, they were like torpedoes to Bridge 1. That thing hits, it's a disaster. And luckily, they were caught because there were properties built, there are parking lots built on property that has no reason to build on those properties. And there was, but I don't know where. But yeah, we're looking at these things.
There are safety measures to retain those issues when it happens, you know, but I think that's further than my knowledge.
Well, there is, there is, but not when it comes to building on creeks. That's, I don't think there's anything you can do to do, you can put dirt and all that, it's still corroded underneath. And it caused, it caused those parking lots to collapse and you had them down, you're going down the river.
But as I said, I mean, there's no intent in improving upon the property at this time. That intent is not there, I don't know why the city started with that.
I don't either, I'm just saying about the building, it's not a way to do that. I see it that to be able to bring something up that's not by the owners, by the city, I understand you can do it, but I've never heard of being done. That's just my comments, thank you.
You have a question?
Yes.
I think maybe this is for staff. What, is this lot actually an AG technically, like because it's on the flood plain? Like is it accurate to say like, oh, it should not be an M1? Because if that's the case, then the lots west of it should also be rezoned to AG.
So you'll be seeing in the next few items?
They're all related.
They're all coming forward. This is one of five.
Oh, this is one of five.
Well, actually, Mr. Barajas owns four and then there's a fifth one that's coming forward.
Okay.
Which is this one, Mr. Caldera owns?
Okay, this is Mr. Caldera's and then you'll have...
Mr. Caldera's here and he said he didn't ask for it. I don't know why they put his name there.
Okay. And I do have a question for you, Mr. Barajas. If we were to table this item, would the family then be able to attend a future meeting to answer questions?
I can certainly ask them, yes.
Okay.
That's what I was going to suggest also. Because of the mourning process and everything, that is the most wise decision I think we can do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very proud, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's no other, keep coming forward. What are the wishes of the commission? If there's no other questions?
I would like to table the item, second.
So we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor?
Quick question.
Yes.
Sir Attorney. Can we just table all six of them? All five of them or four of them?
Next three items. We would have to open them up and then, because they are a public hearing, you have to open them up for comments and then you could take action.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion and a second on this item?
Are these time certain or any next meeting? Or a month? Is there a timeline you'd like to put in?
I think it's only right, at least two months of the meeting.
Two months, so...
And then time to...
So they can, they can have time to schedule a meeting and be able, everybody to be able to...
So we'll do it the first meeting after two months. Hopefully, we're ready by then, okay?
Okay.
So we have a motion to table this item for two months. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6F. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Silo Rado by rezoning Lots 2 and 3, Paso del Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located south of Colton Road and east of Ana Avenue from M1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agricultural District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant Bahara's family and...
For the record, we have applicant Bahara's Family Investments, LLC. Owner and Cilorado applicant, property description, lots two and three, Plaza de Norte Industrial Park, Unit One, located south of Colton Road and east of Ana Avenue. Background, the city council directed staff to initiate the zone change. Zone change M1 to AG, proposed use unspecified, letter sent six, none for, one against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Flood, um, this is, no, I'm sorry, this is a zone map, future land use map, and this is a floodway map. And staff, this staff recommendation is staff does not support, and proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
It affects all, a lot of districts.
Um, I think that's what he was referring to, it's blocks to the same property owner, but it's, uh, the same one for E, F, and G.
At least.
Thank you.
E, F, and G?
Yeah, E, F, and G are all there, yeah, yeah, there's the five lots that are all next to each other.
And I'm, what I'm seeing here, it, it affects
Two.
two districts, no, it's, it, it has, uh, G, six G.
Yeah, two and three seem to be in seven.
Right?
According to what you've not seen.
Alisa's, Alisa and.
Is that correct, or? I believe Markley is the, the street.
Markley?
Markley.
Markley is the one that's like that.
But I, I don't think they're, they're all in the same.
Yeah, I think it's just a type one here, you know?
We don't check that.
Cause F says seven, but, I mean, E and F say seven.
One is seven, but it also affects, I think, Alisa's.
The last one is in G, it's in District Eight.
It's, it's in District Eight.
Four and two.
Four and five are in District Eight.
Right?
Yeah.
On five. On District Eight.
Motion to, you know, motion to close and, and table for two months.
So we have a, a motion to postpone the hearing, table, um, item 6F for two months.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6G.
Second for you.
Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cilorado by rezoning lots four and five, Plaza de Norte Industrial Park, Unit One, located south of Markley Lane and east of Ana Avenue, from N1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agricultural District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For, um, applicant, uh, we have Bahara's Family Investments, Cilorado applicants. Property location, lots four and five, Plaza de Norte Industrial, Industrial Park, Unit One, located south of Markley Lane and east of Ana Avenue. Background, the city council directed staff to initiate the zone change. The zone change is from N1 to AG, proposed use unspecified, letter sent forty-six. We have one against and then four. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. Third way map. And staff recommendation is staff does not support, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
If I could?
Yes.
Just really quick from legal. Um, the outcome is basically the same, but the, the proper motion would be to postpone to a certain date, rather than to lay on the table.
Okay.
Um, and so I was just checking to make sure I was accurate on that, um, so I don't know if we can go back to those, but all of those would be to be postponed to a certain date, rather than lay on the table. Lay on the table just means that you have other matters you need to address first. Um, and it doesn't have a definite timeframe, so you're postponing to a certain date.
Okay.
So being that 6G is open, can I reopen E and F for vote, and then have, have all three done this thing, or no? Would it be okay if they, they just open all of them, and then say the motion for all of them, or you want them one by one?
Since we've already gone through, we've opened them all up already, now you can just do all.
Okay. May I have a motion to?
Motion to reopen 6E and 6F.
And G.
And G, and then here, and then, um, I guess.
Already in G.
Yeah, okay. So I have a motion to reopen item 6E and 6, 6F. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So may I have?
A motion?
Motion to postpone 6E and 6F for two months.
And 6G.
And 6G.
Oh, it, it was already open, okay, and 6G.
So we have a motion to postpone 6E, 6F, and 6G for two months, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from the commissioner custodians, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 6H. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cilorado by amending ordinance 2021-0189, which authorized a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot 1, Block 1, Royal Oaks Subdivision Phase 1, located at 110 Willow Oaks Street, Suite 3, 4,352 square feet, in order to remove Fernando Canseco, applicant, and Lopez and Sons Investment Limited Liability Company, owner for the Taco Maíz Restaurant, and replace with La Terraza Leasing Limited Liability Company, República 359 Restaurant, as the parties to whom the permit is issued, and to man hours of operation and square footage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant Lopez and Sons Investments, LLC owners, David A. Martinez, applicant, and Luis Hernández, representative. Property location, Lot 1, Block 1, Royal Oaks Subdivision Phase 1, located at 110 Willow Oaks Street, Suite 3, 4,352 square feet. Zone change is amendment of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol, letter sent eighteen, none for, none against. Background, we have ordinance 2021-0-189, special use permit. On October 4th, city council approved of an SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol. Requested SUP amendment for the ordinance are as follows. SUP issuance is the removal of Fernando Canseco, applicant, and Lopez and Sons Investments, LLC owner for the Taco Maíz Restaurant, and replacing with La Terraza Leasing, LLC, Republica 359 Restaurant. Square footage, the square footage will be increasing to 4,352 square feet from 2,178 square feet. Hours of operation, um, to amend the hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday to Tuesday through Saturday from 12:00 PM noon to 2:00 AM, Sunday 12:00 PM noon to 10:00 PM, and Monday will be closed. Location view. Street, area view. Street view. Condition, um, zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Luis Hernandez, este, ¿puedes decir en español?
Claro.
Okay, este, vengo a presentarles de La Terraza Leasing, a ver los puntos que nos están, este, dando para hacer los cambios de, unos cambios que nos están pidiendo ahí en el, en el, en la aplicación, si, de lo que antes era Taco Maíz, a lo que ahora va a ser La Terraza. Vengo a ver si ponen la, los puntos a cambiar para llevarle la aplicación a estos días, los cambios que están solicitando ustedes.
Yes. Is there any questions for the applicant? Or for staff in regards to this?
It's only going to, um, to staff, uh, why don't, don't you support it?
So if you, if you look on our, our application, we have staff comments, and then the reason we don't support, parking is gonna be very, very tough there, okay? Um, the proposed restaurant requires fifty-two parking spaces. Uh, the, the commercial plaza, uh, this is a, a, a salon for quinceañeras and things of that nature. And because they're, they're gonna have overlapping times, there's not a sufficient amount of parking in the area. We actually see it as, you know, we're gonna have parking in the streets, um, blocking traffic. And so that's the reason why we've done that, and you can see that this facility, uh, this restaurant, that's being proposed, the proposed times of operation will be to close at two o'clock in the morning. So if you were to have a, a party there, you're still gonna have a restaurant, so they are gonna overlap. And, and it creates a somewhat of a problem when it comes to congestion with cars. So they would need eighty-seven parking spaces in order to comply, or to be within the square footage? To, to fit. To fit. There's.
Question for staff.
Eighty-seven versus how many?
Two that they currently have. What we identified was eighty-seven.
Mr. Oaxaca, why, um, we're in the original, um, condition used permanently. Special use was issued to the previous, um, restauranteur. That, did you, did that get approved here, and got, you know, was it approved by planning and zoning, what has changed, the fact that maybe the restaurant's bigger now, or?
So, um, that was another administration, right? But, um, it happened roughly around when COVID came around. So there, the intent was to open, but with COVID, they, they never invested in, in the property.
I mean, but it was approved, right, I mean, the special use was approved at that point.
It was, it. Okay. But yes, your answer is, to answer your question, yes.
It was approved there until, now, same, same location.
Same location, but based on how I see it, that, that's my opinion.
Makes sense.
But that previous, that previous restaurant was gonna serve alcohol as well? Um, I'm not sure if they were, I, I know that they have a sign up, it was gonna be a tacos maíz.
Right.
And, and, uh, I don't know if they served.
It was, the permit was for restaurants serving alcohol.
Restaurants serving alcohol, okay.
Because there is a need for restaurants in that area, definitely, I think, um, you know. It's a nice restaurant, too.
Yes, sir, yes, come forward. I'm the builder. So I think, uh, I was looking to the footage, I think it's, uh, we have a mistake in the footage, because we're not increasing the, the area.
Sir, can we can speak?
Okay. So, uh, we were looking to the squ- uh, square foot, and I think, uh, we have a mistake in the, because there is no 4,000 square foot. So the area is not gonna increase, you know? So I think this is the issue, because I was looking in some, uh, ordinance and building department, and, uh, we need eighty, eighty-one spots. So I don't know if, uh, you have a, like, uh, the square foot is, is, uh, correct, right?
Um, we have the square footage at forty-three sixty-two.
Yeah. It's not, it's not, it's.
From twenty-one seventy-eight?
Because the square foot is, uh, two thousand five hundred. Yeah, so this is why it's confused, because probably you're confusing with this, because you're, uh, requiring, uh, more spots, right?
So it's two thousand five hundred currently, sir?
That's correct.
Which is about the approximate size of the restaurant that was there before.
And how many parking spaces do you currently have?
Uh, twenty-three for, for the restaurant, and the rest is, uh, for the salon.
Okay.
So I think it's sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty plus twenty-three is eighty-three, eighty-three spots, yes.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, that, we're just looking at a letter that was submitted by David Martinez. Uh, and it says, uh, related to square foot, please change from twenty-one seventy-eight to four thousand three sixty-two, that's what was given to us.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
So, so we just wrote.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, that's correct, but, well, I don't know what, what, what is adding this.
It would be.
What we can do.
That's what, uh, is it being added?
Okay.
So it was this, and now they're adding this piece right here.
Well, actually, uh, we have taco maíz with this area, I don't know why David was requesting more area. Because this area is taco maíz, and the next area, the kitchen, and the next area is the salon. So it was always taco maíz, this, these two areas is always taco maíz, it's.
And you're saying the square footage is.
Can they go back?
Two, two thousand five hundred, there'll always be like this.
Mr. Chair, I mean, uh, we can.
Can we table this, can we do this, do y'all get your numbers right, because it's a waste of time. I make a motion to close.
Would you be okay with, would you be okay with tabling the item?
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely.
This is a public hearing, so let me just go ahead and go, okay, motion, and, uh, so this is public hearing, anyone else wishes to speak? In favor or against? If not.
Motion, motion to close, and what, what do you want?
Table, no, this will be table.
Table.
You can table.
This one is.
Motion to closing table.
Next meeting.
Yes, table to next, and this is table time cer- time certain, correct?
Yes.
Table time certain?
Yes, second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 6I. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cilorado by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot 1A, Block 1, Rancho Verde Subdivision, located at ninety-six fifty-two McPherson Road, Suite 100, two thousand six hundred square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the, um, for the record, we have applicant, um, Jorge O. Gutierrez. Owner, we have Krishna Deng and Perry Gardens as applicant and the representative. Property location, we have Lot 1A, Block 1, Rancho Verde Subdivision, located at ninety-six fifty-two McPherson Road, Suite 100, two thousand six hundred and square feet. We have a zone change request, um, for a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol, letter sent is thirty-seven, we have none for and none against. Location view. Street, I'm sorry, area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Krishna Deng, and I'm the owner of the restaurant. This is a family restaurant, and we're just adding the, the alcohol for the dinner. And most of the place, uh, the businesses that are around there, they close early, so it does not affect, I don't think it affects the parking spaces.
How late do you, what are your hours of operation?
Uh, we open right now from eleven-thirty to nine-thirty.
Yep, is there any questions?
Why are we?
Same, same issue. Which is parking?
Parking by ordinance.
By ordinance, yes.
Okay. How many spaces she required to have?
She's required to have thirty-one parking spaces.
And she's got.
And they're, the, the propos- they're also proposing to, if they were to get the special use permit, to, uh, be open from eleven-thirty AM to two AM, Monday through Sunday.
So that would run into, like, average Joe and.
Rather be. Are you, are you, are you extending the hours if you do get the condition of this permit? Yes.
Oh, okay. For the record, my name is Maribel Barcilla, so not only is she my client, but she's a very good friend of mine of more than eighteen years. So what I do for her is, uh, the TABC licensing and city permits, kind of get, you know, the business ready, while she focuses on that. And, well, we went through the whole transition, so at first she said, well, I'm gonna be open for a couple of months, and then see how the people react, you know, change of ownership, change of location, she didn't know how, if it was gonna, you know, turn out okay. Uh, now being in the business for ten months, people do ask for wine, the ladies, and the men for, for beer. Uh, and why she wants to extend the hours of operation, and I've seen it too, because there, I don't know why, but people, she has the late dinner crowd, like, some of them get there like around ten o'clock. Uh, so her kitchen will be open until two. Now she's been, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Pofio, you're in her district, right, you're a district, okay. So they wanna have like a bachelorette dinners, and they kind of start late. So that's why she wants, you know, to extend her hours to two in the morning. And we were looking at the tenants list, and mostly the businesses, well, one is vacant, the other one, uh, closes at two o'clock, the other one is by appointment, average Joe's, well, they open at four. And really, their busiest days are the, you know, on the weekends, like Friday and Saturdays. But her, she's really focusing on the food. Obviously, her food sales are gonna be higher than, than alcohol's, and she's, it's only beer and wine, it's not the full mixed beverage. Yeah. It's just, it's only beer and wine. It's not the full mixed beverage. Yeah.
So she'll keep a beer and wine only?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And there, there, there is a difference because I see all the applications because that's what I do. I help my clients, but most of them are before, it's all out of town. Uh, but yes, uh, so it doesn't specify if they're only going to be serving beer and wine, it just say beer and wine, but no, hers is limited to that only. So I hope you have a question.
Yes, Gordita.
Um, and what did you mention about the hours of operation? Are you looking to change them or not?
Uh, yeah, she wants to stay open until two o'clock with her kitchen open just because of the crowds that she'll be getting, like if they want to book a birthday or something, uh, they can stay a little bit later. She's actually doing really good. She has a lot of pickup button out, you know, there's more demand.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for, um, for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have some questions. I live just right behind, uh, the lot.
Yes.
On Sapphire Street, Marco Franco.
Yes, sir.
And, um, right now, I would like to invite you to my home. And you'll see, there's, there are some, there's a gym. Yes, there's an eastment and then there's a gym. And there is, there are loudspeakers outside the walls, and you will be able to stand the noise, I can guarantee you. And you're welcome to, to my home from now till probably eight past or six-thirty. So, um, well, sometimes we're watering the, uh, the lawn, and the noise is so, so bad that it gets into the house, the house. We need to increase the volume on our TV. My questions are this. Um, right now, there are two restaurant bars serving alcohol on that same location, and there's another one on McPherson, very close. And, um, now, if there are going to be loudspeakers outside, is there going to be loud live music?
I'd have to ask the applicant, um, if you could just please.
No, live. Okay, so they're, we know that the restaurants are very quiet. My concern, I need to express my concern.
So if you direct the, like, questions to us, so.
Yes, I need to, to, to express my concern. So loudspeakers, uh, there were, uh, we cannot live with that noise.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On the special use, um, item number eight says outdoor music and speakers shall be prohibited.
Okay.
So.
So to answer that question, no, there, there, there'll be no music allowed in the outdoors.
And, um, oh, okay, and, uh, the eastment is not shown in the, I don't, I don't think it's shown in the map on the overview. And I'm, I'm, I'm responsible to take care of that, so I need to keep it clean to.
Okay.
Um, along the grass and everything. Now, let's not forget that this is a residential area also because right behind, there are people living. And, uh, after a hard day's work, we don't, you don't want, you don't want to hear a lot of noise. We want to get home to rest. And sometimes why not sleep siesta? I couldn't sleep siesta. So those are my, my concerns. The sound level, the decibels, live music outside, there are, there are going to be some terrazas outside, people eating, drinking outside, and, uh, playing live music. That's the only, my only, my only question, the only.
For this, for this particular item, there, there is no live music that's, that's allowed, so that would be prohibited. So, um, you can rest assured that however we recommend, and then goes to city council, um, music, outdoor music would not be, um, an issue.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. It, I have a conflict here with thinking that average Joe's is open until two AM. They serve liquor and, you know, other alcohol. So how is it that, you know, we can?
Allow one.
Have one, allow one and not support something similar that actually wouldn't have, uh, liquor?
So once again, um, the ordinance requires a certain amount of parking, and so we do our calculations based on the square footage and the parking, and then if they don't overlap, we use those, those parking spaces and we add it to try to help out. Um, down the street, uh, there's, there is a bar down the street. We've had people parking on the streets, uh, in, on other people's property to go to the, to the club. Um, and we just don't want that same thing to happen here because, because, uh, it is happening.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else, and actually right down the street.
I know she mentioned that, that the, the alcohol is limited to, to beer and wine. If they were to change it to a full service, would they have to come back to reapply for that change or no?
No, I don't believe they, they have to. That would just be a TABC issue.
If we give them the special use permit, then they can do whatever they like. We can't control that.
Right. Are there any questions or for staff or, if not, what are the wishes of the commission?
My motion is closing to do, and, uh, close and, and go with the support of the recommendation from.
Sorry.
Not planning, go with the recommendation.
So you're right, not supporting the.
Not supporting.
So we have a, a motion to not support, um.
Second.
The special use permit. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item six J, amending the zoning ordinance map of the Silverado by rezoning lot one, block one, JD, JDK Platte located at twenty-three nine oh nine FM fourteen seventy-two from B three, Community Business District to M one, Light Manufacturing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant, JDK Transport Owner. We have George Vasquez applicant, and we have Jorge Vasquez and Conestron Land Use Consulting, Daniel Tejera, as representative. We have property location, lot one, block one, JDK Platte located at twenty-three nine oh nine FM fourteen seventy-two. We have the zone change, um, request from a B three to an M one, proposed uses a truck, trucking company, letter sent zero. We have none for and none against. Uh, we have location view. Uh, we have aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Um, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. Uh, Danny Tejera for the record, and I'm here to, uh, support this item and, um, answering the questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Can you, can you put back the? The aerial? No, me ubicó a la altura de la arqueta. Where, where is it located exactly? It, I know it's, yeah.
Yeah, but which street is that? Oh, what street is on the side?
But what, what street?
That's all.
Oh, the street?
Yeah.
It's not, it wasn't identified. I mean, I believe it's a driveway.
It's a driveway?
But she's asking to see it on Google to see what.
Yeah.
On Google. I'm sorry.
It's, uh, pretty much in between World Trade and Columbia.
So here's, uh, Pinnacle, here's Mines Road.
No, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. And it's right in this area right here. Here's the sports training center, Asmussen.
It's down there.
And it's right here where it says JDK Logistics, right in this area. This is the.
It's surrounding, it's surrounded by warehouses or truck, trucking company?
Here's, uh, Diesel Phelps Road, the county roads over here. This, this one here is not a county road or, uh, doesn't need a roadway.
And what, but in the, how do you say? It, it, it only has that entrance? The entrance would be through?
Mines Road.
Through Mines Road?
The entrance is right off the access, even basically the, the road right through the, can you, can you zoom in?
Sure.
It's basically right.
So not on Mines Road. The entrance isn't on Mines Road.
It is by Mine, Mines Road, but.
There's.
The side street, right?
There, there's an access road, basically.
Through the access, through the.
And then there's a curb cut right off the access road. Correct.
But you're going to go through that access road, the one that's unnamed?
It's private, it's private, it's private. Yes, yes, correct. It has really, really good access. I mean, you can take a left if you go on Westbound, you can take a right. It's, it's, the access is actually really good for the side. Um, and they rarely have any actual trucks here because they're constantly moving. They pick up in Mexico and they.
And houses are not, not.
Not.
Not on the.
Nowhere in the area.
The area.
Nowhere in the area. Everything around there is totally.
Totally industrial.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Um, they've been operating there for over five years without any issues whatsoever, so.
So they're, they're just going to quite change from a B three to the M one because of the trucking company?
It's the same use, pretty much, yeah. The same use. They just want, yeah.
Do some of the area.
They've been operating under CUP, so they just.
They've been operating with the CUP.
Under CUP, so they just want that, you know, security.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Anyone, oh, it's a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? There's no other questions for staff or the applicant? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close and introduce, uh, support, uh, staff's recommendation to support.
So you have a motion to support staff's recommendation? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macassidis. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item six K, amending the zoning ordinance map of the Silverado by amending ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash O dash one six three, which authorizes special use permit SUP for restaurants serving alcohol on the east part of lots five and seven, block one sixty-seven, Western Division, and one thousand two hundred and forty-nine point ninety-two square feet out of the main avenue right away, adjacent to lots five and seven, block one six seven. Western Division, as per deed, recorded in volume fifty-three twenty-three, pages seven hundred and forty-one to seven hundred and forty-seven. Webb County Official Public Records located at ten twenty Main Avenue in order to amend the hours of operation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant ten twenty Main LOC owner, and we have Wyndham Hunter as the applicant. Property location, east part of lots five and seven, block one sixty-seven, Western Division, and a thousand two hundred and forty-nine point ninety-two square feet out of the main avenue right away, adjacent to lots five and seven, block one sixty-seven, Western Division, as per deed, recorded in volume fifty-three twenty-three, pages seven forty-one through seven forty-seven, Webb County Official Public Records located at ten twenty Main Avenue. Revision change request from a, for a special use permit amendment for a restaurant, restaurant serving alcohol, proposed uses of restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent R twenty-two. We have none for and none against. Um, background, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash O one sixty-three, a conditional use permit, which, um, which on October third, twenty-twenty-two, city council approved of the CU, of the SUP for restaurant serving alcohol. Rush, requested SUP amendment for the ordinance are as follows. Hours of operation, um, we have to amend the hours of operation from Monday to Sunday, um, seven AM to nine PM to Monday to Sunday, seven AM to twelve AM. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. My name is William Heronster. I'm just here to answer any questions if you guys have any.
I do have questions, Mr. Heronster. Have you ever had any, uh, noise complaint issues or anything, um, from the surrounding area from the residents?
No, we have not.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? There's no questions from staff or for the applicant? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve this item.
You have a motion to support the approval of this item? Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Um, moving on to this item six M, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R one MH single-family manufactured housing district on a tract of land totaling forty-two point eighty-seven acres, more or less as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A and known as annexation tract A eight, AFW Investments Two Track located north of State Highway three fifty-nine and west of Wawa Tejerina Parkway.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Patrick Farrell, AFW Investments Two Track Limited. The engineer of record is Sherfi Engineering. Proposed use of single-family manufactured housing. Letter sent eight, four, zero, against zero. General location. Street view. Two hundred foot notification. Aerial view. Zoning map. Future land use. Survey of the area. Staff supports the proposed annexation. Staff supports the proposed zoning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrela was Sherfi Engineering, uh, here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change and the annexation. Uh, we're still in a little bit trying to get a meeting with the utilities department in regards to the capital improvements, but that's just something we want in regards to clarity. But other than that, we are in full approval of everything.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone wish to come forward for or against? If there's no questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to concur with rec, with staff's recommendation.
So approval for annexation and zoning, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
What is your recommendation? It is not on there.
Support. Staff support.
So we have a motion to support staff's, uh, recommendation for approval of annexation and zoning. We have a motion by Commissioner Estrela. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. If I don't have an objection from staff or the commission, um, the following items, item seven A, seven B, seven C and seven D and seven E are, um, finals. Can I have a motion to hear those together?
I, I have something with Cooper's Landing. I, I have questions.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so which, um.
That is seven C.
Seven C. Okay.
So to hear seven A, B, D, E.
Altogether.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Altogether.
So you have a motion to hear side of, um, item seven A, seven B, seven D and seven E?
Yes.
Second, man.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for, um, action on item seven A, seven B, seven D and seven E?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion? In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Can we read those, um, engine, the items in order, please?
Just, uh, captions?
I can, I can read them.
I can read them.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we have seven A, final consideration of the Rio de San Silo Southwest, and the crossing subdivision phase five lots one nineteen E, block five, and two SKG Twin Home subdivision, the intended residential twin homes. Seven B, final consideration of the plot of Gator Point subdivision phase two, the intended residential. Seven C, final consideration of the plot of Cooper's Landing subdivision, instead of tent is resident, oh, that's not them, seven D, I'm sorry, not them, seven D. Final consideration of the plot of lot one, block one, Avant Legacy Rosewood, the intended residential multifamily. Seven E, final consideration of the plot of last, of last vistas of the La Lado, the intended commercial.
Thank you. Uh, we're now moving on to item seven C, final consideration of the plot of Cooper's Landing subdivision, the intended residential.
I, I wa, I ha, I have a lot of concern just because, uh, you only see the location, and I know that I've heard about Cooper's Landing and everything. And I know that I've heard about Cooper's Landing and everything. But I, I have several tracts there that have been a little complicated. And I just wanna see where, do we have the sufficient space? Do you have like a map where we can see if we, you have the parking space or something? Cause I only see the.
Yes, um, I don't, it's, it's already read, open?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Ricardo Villarreal, topside civil group, um, engineer on the project. Uh, this is, uh, Cooper's Landing.
Mm-hmm.
It is, uh, just off the top of my head, roughly about a thirty lot development. It's residential lots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is within the La Bota, uh, subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
But this one does differ from La Bota because this is following City of Laredo ordinances. So the roadways are fifty foot right away, thirty-one back to back with curb and gutter. Um, the.
What about the buffer? Do you have the buffer?
Buffer?
There's a buffer from, do you need a specific buffer from the M one? It's good, there's, there's in that strip, I think. There's a lot of M one. There's a lot of other.
So there, so there is, um.
Está del otro lado.
Yeah, so, so the industrial is behind our track.
Behind.
That doesn't have access to our track.
Right, okay.
Um, we are not creating access to the industrial as well.
Okay.
Um, we kept the same zone that was the underlying zone. I believe it was R one.
One.
A. R one or R one A, I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, the lots are following the, the, um.
The guidelines.
The guidelines and the size requirements, setbacks, so on, so forth.
Uh, Rick, is this behind the, the security shack?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say. Is it behind or is it in front?
Yeah, it's inside the La Bota.
It's inside?
Yes, correct. Um.
Do, are you gonna only have one exit, like?
Well, we are having, this is part of the La Bota master plan.
Okay.
Um, so we are utilizing, uh, Mueller.
Mueller.
Uh, roadway, parkway.
Parkway.
They will have to go in through the gate, um, part of the P, it's actually part of a PUD, the Plan Unit Development.
Okay.
Um, this is one of the only tracks that was already residential. Um, some of the other ones, this one also has access to Mueller. Um, some of the other tracks adjacent to ours has a, has a, uh, what do you call it? A strip, uh, off the top of my head, I can't remember, like a, a different owner owns a strip and then the big lots are a different owner. This one was different. This one was, uh.
All.
All, all within and have, uh, have access to it. We do have our own detention pond adjacent to the existing pond. Um, we are gonna be providing park improvements as well, uh, fee, um, for the park improvements that's currently existing. So there'll be some injection in there. Um, what else? Uh, we have met with the councilwoman. We met with the councilwoman before we even started this project, um, just to make sure that everything was, was copacetic. Um, we've gone through all the processes, have all the approval letters from all the five different departments, fire, uh, utilities, traffic, environmental and engineering.
The thing is, I, I knew it was gonna be there, but I didn't know it was gonna be, was that cerquita or the otro lado?
Yeah, so it's more, it's getting to the pond.
It's getting to the pond, on the right hand side.
Yes.
Got it. I thought it was on the other side.
No, this one.
Ya está azulando. Alright. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, um, for staff or for the engineer, um, can I have a motion on the second?
Motion to accept number, number C.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Are there any directed comments? Any CEO here, if you have any comments, Mr.?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries or adjourned?
Thank you.